You got it. A party in order, we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's have a roll call of the members present, please.
Councilmember Whitten.
I am here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
By myself.
Councilmember Paparazzi.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis and Councilmember Sims. Five present.
Thank you very much. Councilman Reavis is unfortunately at a funeral this evening, his father-in-law passed away, so he asked that I let everybody know why he wasn't here. And Councilman Sims is coming back from Washington DC with a busload of high school kids.
Trainload.
A trainload of high school kids, so he was also unable to make it. Next on the agenda is our approval of council minutes for April 23rd, 2019. What is your pleasure?
We approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds, any changes or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Madam Honored, first reading.
Notice is hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government and Administration Building located at 155 Indiana Avenue of Valparaiso on May 28th, 2019 at 5:30 PM to consider the following additional appropriations affecting county budgets for the year 2019 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund, General Court, $3130 training and education, $1,000. Cumulative Bridge Fund, $1135. $4420 motor vehicles, $9,000. Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, $1176. $2310 tires and batteries, $20,000. Stormwater Fund, $1182. $4420 motor vehicles, $9,000. Surveyors Perpetuation Fund, $1202. $1110 salaries, $8,000. $1210 FICA, $612. $1230 perf, $896. Drug Task Force Fund, $4010. $4540 other equipment, $5,000. Inmate Processing Fee Fund, $4911. $4510 data processing, $2,000. Virtual Pathways Agreement Fund, $4924. $4540 other equipment, $10,000. And Porter County Sheriff Highway Interdiction Fund, $4925. $4540 other equipment, $15,000. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, signed Vicki Urbannick, Auditor of Porter County, and published May 17th, 2019 in the Chesterton Tribune.
Thank you, Madam Honored. First thing on the agenda, our next thing on the agenda, Circuit Court Judge Bradford, General Fund, transfer $4,000 from 39780 care of patients and inmates to 11200 ILE, needed to cover a part-time law clerk.
They moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
I was reading her.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Have a good evening.
Same here, always.
General Courts, Judge Bradford, General Fund, County Court, additional $1,000 to training and ed, money needed for additional mandatory compensation.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparazzi.
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Next is our reassessment fund, a transfer of $1,500 from furniture fixtures to office equipment. Will need transfer to buy cameras for reassessment. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening. Development and stormwater. Stormwater Fund additional $9,000 to motor vehicles to purchase fleet vehicle for departments. How's it going, everybody?
Good evening. I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, we approve.
No, no.
We get a discussion.
Oh, we get a discussion, okay.
Get the discussion.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve or deny.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's your motion?
Let me try to...
What do you want us to do here?
What's your motion?
I want to talk about it first.
So you can make a motion to approve or deny.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny, to talk about it.
We have a motion to deny on the floor, is there a...
We've got to get some discussion.
Is there a second? Well, I understand what you're trying to do here, but you've got to choose.
I'll second that.
All right, so you've got a motion to deny with a second on the floor. Discussion. Bob.
$9,000, you're going to take half out of bridge and then half out of this?
Remember now, we've got people from the Highway Engineering Fund, we have Plan Commission members, and we have stormwater. We are looking at getting five vehicles on this. We recently have been sitting down talking with Enterprise Fleet Management System, and the commissioners wanted to try our department on this. Basically, we split it three ways, going across the board with engineering, stormwater, and plan commission for these vehicles. We are replacing three vehicles, but we're getting a total of five.
Are you leasing them?
It's a lease agreement, and maintenance agreement too. And what this is, I mean, essentially, we're going to get title for these.
It's a lease purchase.
It's a lease purchase, yes. And we're doing this instead of...
It's a prepaid lease.
Right. Instead of waiting until these vehicles just are rattling down the road and falling apart, what we do in this situation is, is there's a sweet spot that they're going to have on this. When these vehicles hit $50,000, they're going to take them from us, we're going to get new vehicles on it, and then they're going to sell the vehicle at $50,000. Then that money that they sell it for rolls back into us, and we get equity. The three vehicles that we do have that we're going to have replaced this year, there are two Ford trucks, and also a Taurus. They're predicting conservatively that we're going to get $19,000 for this. This $19,000 is equity that will roll back into it. So out of the $25,000, we're only going to have maybe $6,000 payment this year. But I'm going ahead and put in for the full mount going across, because we have these fleet vehicles on that, so that way somebody from Highway Engineering, Plan Commission, or Stormwater can just run out, grab a key, boom, we've got the vehicle for it.
How many vehicles do you have in this fleet now? Or how many vehicles?
Currently, we have seven, but we're probably going to have to go... We are going to go up to nine. I... We're getting new employees, we're going to need this.
You have seven currently?
Seven currently.
And we're talking about getting five additional on top of the seven?
No. Three of them are going to be replaced, and they're going to be two new.
Total of nine?
Right.
And what year was... I thought we just purchased them? Or was that a couple of years ago, three years ago?
We purchased one for stormwater, and if we... We're trying it for the five vehicles here. That stormwater is one that it might drives in, but if anybody needs a vehicle...
So these are all pairs here?
Yeah. To give you an idea, I walked out today, and I needed a vehicle to get up to Nerpsey. I had to drive my own personal vehicle instead of grabbing one of the fleet vehicles. Why? Because we had all of the fleet vehicles on the field, looking at stuff, whether it was drainage, whether it was highway, it was a plan commission, or code enforcement building, it was out there. We need vehicles. Either that, or we start charging for mileage and use our personal vehicles. So that's the reason why we're doing this. We are doing this as an experiment with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Because it...
And we went through and...
It says purchase.
It does. It's lease purchase, like you said. We've been working through with the commissioners on this, and they just recently signed the contracts for these.
It's my impression, though, with that process, we won't actually own the vehicle.
Right. Everything that Scott tells me, I asked about that.
It's a lease purchase.
That we will have these vehicles, they are ours.
Yeah. So the contracts have all been signed to do this?
Correct.
Oh, wow. Did you know, anybody who wrote my account know anything about that?
I did, because I was at the commissioner's meeting.
Oh, okay.
Were you asked about it there?
Was not asked about specifically.
Just curious. So no one specifically asked you about it or anything like that, you just have to be the meeting?
Why don't we buy them?
At the meeting.
Why? Are you going to allow us to trade these things in? Number one, they're going to trade it in. One, when we finally get rid of these vehicles, they're over 100,000 miles on it, they're crap, let's face it. They are absolute crap. And what do they do? They go down to the sheriff's and they sell. And do we see any of that money? No. And then we end up dumping $25,000. I need two vehicles right now. So right now, it's, you know, I would be looking at $50,000 to be able to get this year two new vehicles. I've got to have them.
Papers are already signed, so...
No, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry, you know, and Bob, calm down. Calm down.
All right, hold on.
Why are we buying these vehicles? Nobody's answered that question.
This is something...
Really, I own eighty trucks. So let's not get into this discussion about leasing versus purchasing.
All right. This is something that the commissioners... Yeah. This is something that the commissioners requested that we look into. They were looking at this as a possibility of... The maintenance is covered by Enterprise.
Okay.
The... Everything is covered by Enterprise. $50,000 miles...
It's definitely no warranty, brakes and tires will be covered.
Right. You're right. That is not covered. Oil changes won't be covered, and everything like that. And after $50,000 miles, they'll take those vehicles, they'll sell them, and all of that money that they sell it for rolls back into us as equity.
But then you've got to turn around and release vehicles. They're not going to give you a check for $19,000.
What ends up happening is, is like I mentioned in this situation, our annual fee, and also it helps with budgeting. I know the exact amount that I'm going to have to budget every year. Right now, within the budget, there is absolutely no line item for vehicles. So, I mean, if you want me to go out and purchase them, we'll go out and purchase them. But I'm blowing in $50,000 into these accounts, because I've got to have vehicles this year. So, that's one of the reasons why we're looking into it, and that. So, I mean, this equity rolls in, this $19,000 that they're predicting...
Wait, wait, you circle back to that.
All right.
The $19,000 from Enterprise, you will not get a check?
No.
That will go towards the next vehicles we lease?
No, it will go to these vehicles that we're purchasing now.
Well, we're not purchasing them, we're leasing them.
Well, that's a difference, a subtle difference. I'm hearing three different terms here. I'm hearing lease, I'm hearing prepaid lease, and then I'm hearing lease purchase. Those are very different contractual arrangements. So, some of these...
My impression, maybe answer, my impression is that we will not have title to that car. Is that true?
I was told by Scott McClure, our attorney, that for all intents and purposes, we own the vehicles. He's the one that sat down and worked out this with me, with Enterprise, in looking at this. Will we see a check from Enterprise for $19,000? No.
No.
Basically, our...
They'll roll it back in.
$25,000 that we would have to pay for one year, they will roll it back in, and then we only have to pay what? The remainder, eight, or whatever.
They're going to sell the trucks and apply that money towards the lease. They're going to sell the... You're trading in, basically, three?
Three.
And they're going to sell them, and apply that money to the lease on the five.
Right. Well, okay. So we have a motion to deny on the floor with a second. Any other questions? We're about to take...
Yeah, if I could, so the amount that you're asking for tonight, to go toward this lease, it's the nine plus the nine...
Right, that's all I see.
Eighteen?
You're asking for eighteen.
No. No. There's plan commission, there's highway engineering under the bridge fund...
Twenty-seven.
And then there's stormwater. So we're looking at $27,000, because I think the actual fee for the one year is $25,000 and change.
Is that... The only thing on the agenda, though, is the plan commission and... There's three on there. There's three. I'm sorry.
Let me give you a virtual tour down the agenda.
Then I missed it.
We've got the bridge from Kew Bridge, and we've got the transfer...
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Okay.
So...
Unlimited mileage?
Yes.
How much is a mileage fee? Do they charge mileage fee?
No. Everything I saw on the contract, no.
Just so much a month?
It's so much a month, and when the vehicle hits 50,000 miles, they take it, get us a new one, and whatever they sell it for, that rolls into the equity.
What is the term of the lease?
As far as...
How many years?
It's based off of the mileage, as I mentioned. If we drive a vehicle in one year that's 50,000 miles, it could be one year.
I've got to see these leases, I've got to see them.
Do you have a copy, by chance?
I have it upstairs. I can send it to everybody.
Can we table this? No, I'll withdraw my motion, just for discussion.
I'll withdraw my second.
All right, so the motion to deny and the second has been withdrawn. Now I need another motion.
They already signed it.
Yes.
Is there...
This is what I would like...
I need a motion to... You want to make a...
Yeah, I'm sure that we are on a specific additional for the...
If you want to see the agreements, fine. Table it. I have them upstairs, we have not submitted them to Enterprise, because, one, I was waiting for this vote.
Well...
So, if you want to see the agreements, I've got no problems with that. I'm just saying, I need two vehicles now.
All right, I move to table it then.
All right. There's a motion to table on the floor and a second.
Is there a time constraint, Bob, against this?
None. If they order the vehicles, it's looking like September to October, before we get these things. If they're new. If they order them directly from the factory.
They just pick up trucks?
No. I've got two pickup trucks, I got a sedan, mid-sized sedan, and two small SUVs.
And they're all going to just be parked here in the garage?
They're going to be parked in the garage, none of them are take-home vehicles, they're fleet.
Well, there's a few questions that probably need to be ironed out here, certainly before I'm willing to vote for this, but it seems sounds to others like there's at least some degree of confusion as to the terms and nature of the contracts. So, at this point, there's a motion to table with a second. Any other discussion? All is in favor of the motion to table the additional $9,000 from Stormwater Fund, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Just table.
Okay.
Now let's go to the Plan Commission, Kew Bridge Fund. There's also an additional $9,000. I assume the same thing, folks?
Motion table.
Do you want to encompass into that the, also, the transfer of $9,000?
That would make sense, yes.
So a motion to table the two remaining $9,000 requests, additional from Kew Bridge Fund and the transfer from Plan Commission Fund. Is there a second?
Yeah, I second that.
There's a second to the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, those two requests are also tabled. Do you have, Bob, in the meantime, in the meantime, if you would be so kind as to...
I'll sign you too.
Give us copies of all those things.
I'd be more than happy to, sure.
Do you guys pay... Do you have a mileage fund that if you did have to use a personal vehicle, we pay mileage?
Um, yes, we do. Not in the highway... Not for the highway engineers, for plan commission, and I believe, I don't... I'd have to check on stormwater. I do know we have it on plan commission, but I don't know about the other engineering sites. Small one, yeah. Mike just told me, we do have a small amount on stormwater.
Well, we obviously have to reimburse somebody if they use their personal vehicle.
Correct.
They won't... This won't happen if we... This is May, and they won't deliver till September, October?
If they order the vehicles directly from the factory, yes.
I think they have, you know, obviously they have a better understanding what lease is, makes sense, it'd be helpful if Scott was here, for instance.
Right.
Or one of the commissioners, perhaps. The idea of a prepaid lease, that's not... We didn't create that, that's a process that's out there, and it can work very successfully, and it ultimately can be a cost savings.
Right.
But I think it's important to take a look at what that is before we take action on it. But to me, it begs the question a little bit, because we're talking about vehicles overall, so kind of a sidetrack note, and I think it'd be helpful for all the council members to, as we look at vehicles throughout the county, is there, here's my question and request, is there a master list of...
Yes.
Those vehicles? Who's driving them? What's the criteria for that? And can we have that presented to us?
There is such a list, because as you may recall, some time ago, some years ago, when they pulled the list up, is when they discovered that there were vehicles on there being insured that we no longer own.
Yes.
So, yes, the wrecked are gone, so...
So I would like to confirm that we're not falling into that same trap, and to make sure that we know how many vehicles we have throughout the county.
I'm not against them getting vehicles.
Right.
Even, you know, if you needed a couple more, I don't know if leasing is in our best interest. We're not... This isn't a business. Is it... I don't understand where the push was to lease versus just buying.
Well, let's take a look at what they look at.
Well, I mean, forget the details, the principle, the big concept, $30,000 foot. I mean, we don't lease squad cars. Why do we not, you know, what? Why don't we just buy the trucks, or whatever you need?
So, yeah, those are all wonderful questions that will stay tuned.
They already signed it? Was it pending our vote?
I don't know. They signed it.
It's not submitted, that's the bottom line.
It's not submitted.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it was pending approval. They've been pretty good about that. So, let's go to the next thing on the agenda, which is the transfer of $6,000 from Culver's to Furniture Fixtures to purchase new desks and chairs for new employees. What's your pleasure?
Motion.
Second.
So motion and second for this transfer, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have a question, Sylvia?
Well, I would just... Just for clarification, how many more employees are you talking about? Two or three?
Currently, two.
Two.
Full-time currently?
Currently, two.
Full-time?
One's part-time. One would be full-time, yes.
How many desks and chairs does $6,000 get us?
We're having to come back in next month and ask for a little bit more on this.
Really?
Because we're already putting in... We have no... Yeah, to hire the part-time secretary, there's no place... There's no station for her. If we hire the project manager, there's no station for him. So we're looking at actually setting up pods like we have in the thing... In the section for the highway engineering, where we put four of them together. We have some space that's probably underutilized, where the building commissioner and code enforcement officer set, so we're going to set up a couple pods. We also have interns in there. We have two interns now, and possibly a third intern. Again, no spot to put them.
So how many... So tonight's transfer request, how many desks are you anticipating buying with that?
I think the total bill for what we're looking at could be close to 10,000. This probably will get us three workstations.
The 10,000?
Right. Well, the 10,000, if we go to the total 10,000, I'm going to be back for 4,000 next. It's probably looking at three new desks and the electrical outlets with also the cubicles and everything for them.
Any other questions, guys? Let's take this vote again. All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Transfer's approved. Transfer $7,800 from consultants to salaries for salary of new project manager, along with that is a Form 144-0, the 7,800 project manager, one salary for new project manager. What is your pleasure with this request?
A motion.
Second.
A motion and second to approve.
Yes.
What questions do we have with this?
Are you... What is the rest of the salary for this project?
It's in the highway administration fund, right now.
What is their salary going to be?
It'll be $65,000.
So when we did the budget, you...
Is it in the position?
It's been in the position... It's been in the budget.
Let me finish my question.
All right, I'm sorry.
And then we'll move on. So, when we did the budget, you anticipated a salary that was $7,800 less when we created the position, is that what it is? And then you've come... You decided that it needs to be $7,800 higher than what's budgeted?
We've had this position vacant now for one year. All right. We do have a candidate to be able to get this candidate. This is an offer we're trying to make to get this candidate, and we have been struggling to try to find a candidate that is qualified for this position for the past year. The person that last held this position was Rich Sexton, and as you know, he's left and gone over and become the highway superintendent. So we've had this position vacant.
So is that a... So that's a yes to my question?
Yes.
We had it budgeted with less?
Right.
We've been coming in and asking for $7,800.
What was it budgeted for? What was it budgeted for?
It was at fifty-seven thousand and some change, basically.
Fifty-seven-two?
Yeah, fifty-seven-two.
That's correct.
Right.
I just wanted to get old history here to make sure.
Sure.
And so, we're going to sixty?
Five.
Sixty-five.
And will this come out of highway or is this coming out of?
Fifty-seven-two is coming out of the highway administrative, and then this is coming out of the Kimball Bridge.
So, this will be the highway engineer?
It will be in the highway engineering section, yes.
Yeah, the project manager, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Who has been fulfilling those duties, uh, when, since we don't have a person doing it?
It's a team effort.
It's a team effort.
Myself, Maggie Velik, our highway engineer.
What's in the Kimball Bridge?
The-
I know you gave us that thing, but-
Right now, we're having to hire consultants to cover this work if we're doing it and give you an ideal. If we're going to have to spend, we're looking at saving a hundred thousand dollars this year on consultants.
By filling this position, we'll be able to save that money and then some from-
That was the entire discussion, right, Bob?
Right, right.
That's right. The fees we were paying far exceeded what we were going to spend.
Exactly.
And we've got about one point eight mill in the Kimball Bridge Fund, correct?
Yes.
So, all right, any other questions on this? So, this is not a mid-year raise, you're trying to recruit.
Right.
We're trying to recruit, exactly.
Yep.
We do not have anybody in this position.
Okay, that answers my questions. Anybody else have any? Uh, can I get a roll call as to the transfer in the 144, please?
Okay, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Uh, highway.
Thanks, guys.
We have a couple things here, twenty thousand dollar additional motor vehicle highway fund, twenty thousand dollar additional to tires and batteries, money needed to replace payload of tires, and five hundred bucks to pay for plaques for employees that have worked for the county for twenty years or longer.
Motion.
Move, second.
A motion and a second, I assume, for the additional and the transfer. Correct?
Yes.
Um, any discussion on this?
Just a side quick question, uh, just for my information. Rich, so for the plaques and acknowledgement of the employee, that's a wonderful thing to do and, you know, it's a real positive, positive thing.
We've got two employees, one thirty-one years, one thirty-three years, and one, this will be his fortieth year in August.
Yeah, so I thought, so I compliment you on starting that, if we haven't had something like that, it's long overdue. The question is, throughout the other departments in the county, do we have similar programs and are there procedures or policies set up or how we arrange that? Does anybody know or?
Thank you.
I think it varies by department to department, actually.
I mean, I actually got my-
People don't last that long.
Yeah, I think we have long-term employees.
According to our sheriff's, at least-
Oh, yeah, no question. I'm just saying, if something's good for the highway department, maybe it's something good for another department and-
The sheriff's department, I was up here when I first took over and they were recognizing some long-term employees.
So, it's nine-one-one.
And I was like, why wouldn't we do that? I got forty-year guy and I got thirty-year guys, I got, I think we ended up giving out eighteen or nineteen plaques of the staff.
That's a great idea.
Thirty-eight drivers, so half of them have over twenty years' experience.
That's awesome.
We got a, yeah, we got a motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second, so, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good reports that you're giving us. Thank you.
Sheriff, all right, so we've got a couple of things here to deal with, or several things. Porter County, I'm sorry, General Fund Sheriff, zero-zero-zero-five, Porter County Sheriff, eighteen compensation agreement, Porter County Sheriff, nineteen compensation agreement.
He didn't get paid last year?
No.
Nope.
Oh, sure, thanks.
Oh, just we missed that.
I wasn't here. Thanks, thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Both of them.
A motion and a second on both of them?
Yeah.
No discussion?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Um, agreements are, congratulations, you're still sheriff.
You're still paid.
Drug Task Force, additional five thousand other equipment for wireless access point and service, what's your pleasure?
Motion.
A motion and a couple of seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Lar, uh, Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Virtual Pathways Education Fund, ten thousand other equipment.
Approved.
Second. Well, I think it's, we'll ask. Um, there's a motion and a second on the floor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Porter County Highway Interdiction Team, fifteen thousand other equipment for radars and car camera equipment.
So, moved.
Motion and a couple of seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Five to zero.
That number seven, Bob.
Zero, inmate processing fee fund, additional two thousand, printer and printing supplies for file on cue, our evidence equipment for assistance, eighteen.
Motion approved.
Couple of motions, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Do you have questions about that?
The numbers don't line up with what I read. One says one forty-nine, the other one says one fifty-two.
I think you got a raise in there.
Two years, two different years.
Okay, I was wondering.
Yeah, we're getting the raise that we gave.
The higher one's two thousand and nineteen.
Which one we signed it?
You just wanted to say that number out loud?
What we approved, both years, we approved both years. One's eighteen, one's?
One's nineteen.
One's eighteen for house cleaning because I-
Yeah. We went back, they're not the same.
Current's nineteen.
We gave, we gave a raise.
I understand that, this is nineteen.
One's nineteen, one's eighteen.
Eighteen is the lower.
Just like to commend you, Sheriff.
So, both of them are, both of them are, we did both, Bob.
We got it.
I got your text, Dave, and I'm looking at it.
He can talk to me about it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can work with other things.
Yeah, yeah, we'll figure it out.
We need to sign this and send it down?
No, we just approved it, the commissioner signed it.
I just wanted to amend for that program.
Well, yeah, on the back, both of them.
Didn't get a whole lot of coverage from us, but you did a great job. I know Sylvia was there.
Oh, yeah.
Amy missed it, is that what happened?
I had something else.
That was, it was a great program, a lot of, a lot of great speakers.
Really was.
All right.
Every one.
Surveyor. So, we've got a couple of things going on here. We've got the one forty-four request, forty-four-two-twenty to zero survey tech, and then zero to forty-four-four-twenty, survey manager. Especially with HR, like, to purpose, I'm sorry, propose the survey tech position be replaced with the survey manager who will have formal surveying education and at least ten years of private sector professional and surveying experience.
A motion.
A motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion?
Can I explain that a little bit, Devin?
Sure, uh, just like the other department, we had real difficulty in placing techs. I was unable to fill this position prior to your budget last year, uh, or after your budget last year. My tech announced he'd probably be leaving. He actually didn't leave until late January this year, but the whole time I'd been looking for somebody to replace him. I have not found anybody close to being qualified to fill that role. I've got to release them with their cars, trucks, safety and highway, upwards of thirty thousand dollars' worth of equipment. I need somebody reliable, trustworthy, and safety-conscious to be working out there.
So, if I understand, you're basically taking your survey tech, you're making him a survey manager, and along with that, it need, you're requesting a higher salary?
Correct.
That's it, that's what's happening here.
What would that salary be?
Uh, somewhere between fifty-five and fifty-seven thousand.
Thank you.
It looks like with HR, you came up with a new job description?
Correct.
Aligning duties and broadening, obviously broadening the responsibilities and-
Yes, sir.
Do we have that job description?
If you don't, I'll give you a copy.
I have it, you sent it to me, I just didn't know if everybody, I thought I could hear.
Do you think that's an adequate salary?
I'm able to get somebody for it, that's all I can tell you. I talked to two or three people about it, and they were interested at that salary.
That meet the qualifications?
That meet the qualifications and probably exceed the requirements that I have.
So, I assume the requests out of the perpetuation fund are all related to the same request, correct?
Correct.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the one forty-four. Can I get an amended motion to encompass the additional in one forty-four of the surveyors' perpetuation fund?
Yes, for the second.
Motion is, first, all right. Any other discussion? So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the one forty-four from General Fund Surveyor and the additional from Perpetuation Fund and the Form 144 from the Surveyors' Perpetuation Fund. Bob, what's your-
What's the difference between a technician and a manager?
The manager will be the supervisor over the technicians, the interns, any other employees that we have out in the field. Ideally, and in the past, we've run two or three crews, so this will give that individual responsibility to answer this back to me about where these people are at and make sure we're making progress.
Who does it now?
I don't, well, I do it now for the time being.
How many employees do we have out there?
Right now, including myself, my department has four full-time employees. I've got, uh, three part-timers, I will have a fourth, two of which are used mostly in the field.
So, if I understand, as it stands right now, there's you, and then under you are the techs?
Correct.
And then you've got some part-time folks?
In the office.
And this manager that you're, you're, you're not promoting a current tech to manager?
Correct.
You're out looking for somebody with some experience?
I don't have anybody in the department that's besides myself who meets the requirements and qualification, so it's not a salary increase.
Yeah.
You're looking for a licensed surveyor?
Uh, I can't afford a licensed surveyor. That'd probably run anywhere from ten to thirty thousand dollars more a year.
Gotcha.
It'd exceed my salary, and I am a licensed surveyor. But that's fine.
Wouldn't that be ironic?
It always is.
It happens to elected officials.
That's true.
Yeah, that's true.
Joy makes more than us.
Have to put up.
Okay, any other questions on these requests? Hearing none, roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
See you later.
Have a good night.
Go get them, man, go get them.
Thank you.
And we will now. ITF General Fund IT, transfer fifteen thousand, five forty-two from data processing to maintenance agreement, Cisco.
Motion.
Umbrella Security antivirus and malware protection, we have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
And a second. Any discussion with respect to this request?
Well, I think it's very well spent if we're trying to get antivirus and malware.
Keep the Ukrainians out, Russians. Keep the Russians out, I'm counting on them for the next election.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make the mo, you got a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Way beyond.
Three or two, so watch it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Brut.
Heard we got it in the store, more than we was thinking already.
Let's have a second reading, man, Honorable-
Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore be it ordained by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sum of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified subjects and laws governing the same. General Fund, one thousand dollars. MVH Fund, eleven-seventy-six, twenty thousand dollars. Surveyors' Perpetuation Fund, nine thousand five hundred and eight. Drug Task Force Fund, forty-ten, five thousand dollars. Inmate Processing Fee Fund, forty-nine-eleven, two thousand dollars. Virtual Pathways Fund, forty-nine-twenty-four, ten thousand dollars. And Sheriff Highway Interdiction Fund, forty-nine-twenty-five, fifteen thousand dollars. And that concludes second reading.
What's your pleasure on second reading?
I made a motion, second.
All kinds of motions and seconds. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Couple of, thank you very much. Harold, our attorney, who's, I got a text, he's hung up in a deposition. I didn't think it'd be an issue, there's not a whole lot going on tonight. But one thing that I wanted to bring up before we get to the Porter Hospital, a couple of things. One is, I'm told that our library board appointment is expiring at the end of June, so I would ask that we address the appointment with the library board at our next meeting. There it is. So, we can take applications, our current appointment tells me that she'd like to stay on there, so, but we can certainly take-
Have you had conversations?
We've had some conversations. She wins every single one of them, my wife, for those of you who don't know. Uh, but, uh-
Do we, do we need to wait for applications?
Yeah, we probably should. Let's take applications for the next, just to see who's out there. If she doesn't get reappointed, that's real bad for me, but, hey, you guys don't have to go home.
Hmm. I was just saying, we can make this a little easier.
Yeah. Last time, we didn't get a whole lot of applications, and the time before that, we had to go out and find people to apply.
I'm going to turn my wife.
And I really like your wife, too. I hate Jews, man. So, if we could put that on the agenda for the next meeting for library board appointment, that would be, it'd be appreciated. The other thing is, I had a late request, and I don't know that we want to tackle it tonight, but I asked Joy to print it out and give it to you anyway. The commissioners had asked us for a one forty-four reduction, um, and, uh, so there it is in front of you. Was there a time thing on this?
Currently, I'm looking for hiring a custodian.
Come on up. Yeah, we'll take a look here. Tell us what's going on here.
I had a custodian recently resigned from a position, took a position in the prosecutor's office, and I think nineteen thirty-two an hour is pretty high for a custodian position when I can get him for fifteen dollars an hour.
So, we would, so you're asking for us to do a one forty-four reduction to the current position?
Yes.
Is that all this is?
Yes.
Vicki, does this, this isn't on the agenda, it hasn't been ever, can we do a one forty-four reduction without?
Yes, one forty-four. Mm-hmm. If, yeah.
Not adding a position, just reducing it.
So, what's your pleasure on this?
So, we want to take it down from nineteen thirty-two to? Fifteen dollars an hour. Why do we have to do anything? Just let them pay him fifteen dollars an hour.
Nah, I don't think this is- It's not an up due deal, I don't think, is it?
It's a, we set a salary here, man.
It's a salary.
We set a salary. I think, I think you got a salary, if you look at it, it's thirty-five thousand, one seventy-seven, twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven-three is what you're expecting? Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed one forty-four with the reduction.
You're confident we can get qualified people for that?
Definitely.
And I appreciate where you were taking a look at it, at, at it in that light, to reduce it to an appropriate rate. I think that's terrific. We need more of that.
All right, thank you for putting it on the board today.
No problem. So, well, let's get a roll call on this, one forty-four, I like that.
Uh, Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Okay. Five to zero.
Alright, thank you for putting it on the board today.
No problem.
So, uh, well, let's get a roll call on this, 144, I like that.
Uh, Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Okay. Five to zero.
Uh, are there things that may come properly before the council? Um, well, let's, I'll, I'll hold my comment for a little bit. So Porter Hospital LLC. So what you guys have in front of you, obviously, is the Form CF1. This is related to the tax abatements or compliance, uh, statements. What questions do you guys have with respect to this?
Did they meet the requirements?
Seems like it.
We're about, how much, how many more years do we have left on this statement?
We're about getting close to the end of the rainbow here.
Yes, three or four.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I meant to get that paper.
In the section five and seven, there's technically a few stipulations here. Uh, most of those have already passed, so the one that I believe is always presented here is that we've maintained the number of employees, and that is correct. We have maintained and exceeded about 168 employees.
So what, so what, on this year's abatement, where are we at on the abatement? Cause sliding scale down, so-
Right.
Do you know where we're at on this year?
We can call that up real quick.
If somebody knows.
Yeah.
While she's doing that, does anybody else have any other questions?
Not really.
Just pleased to see that it came in on time.
That just rolled up?
It's rolled up, it is off.
And then you guys are here as our representative.
Mine lived two blocks away, so excuse me.
Yeah, quite a scare with the weather.
Tell me about it.
We're in year seven, Dan, I think we're in year seven.
Yeah, I, I wanted to see where we're at on the percentage.
It'll be 70%.
10% a year, I thought. Yeah, but I, no, it's not 70, well, yeah, it's pretty close. Yeah, it's pretty close. If you're not on, that's fine, Vicki, if it's, maybe, I was just curious, you can give that to us next time. So, can I get a motion to approve and accept the Form CF1 as submitted by the Porter Hospital?
I'll make the motion.
Second. And a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let's get a roll call on this as well.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparad?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Do any gentlemen have any questions for us?
No, sir, thank you.
Alright.
See that, schedule, just kind of wish you luck.
You still trying to bring that up, Vicki, or? While she's doing that, the only other thing I wanted to say was, is, you guys may recall, I reached out to all of you some years ago, we've taken our council meeting on the road,